Okay, we'll make it in our name, Insha Allah. Should we begin? Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah, was salaatu was salaam ala rasulillah wa ala alihi washohbihi ajma'in. Ama ba'd. Fa'adubillahi minash shaytani rujim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Ya ayyuhalladziina aman attaqallah. Wal tanzur nafsumma qaddamat ligadiu wa attaqallah. Inna allaha xabiirum bima ta'malum. Suddiqallahul 'azim. Insha Allah, we have the sister space available here downstairs in the west side. So those of you who would like to come downstairs, you are welcome to do so, Insha Allah. Alhamdulillah, the blessing of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala, who has given us many different blessings in our life. And amongst the greatest blessings of Allah, amongst the great blessings of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala, is this house that we are in, his house. The masjid. The masjid belongs to Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala, and the masjid will stay the property of Allah till the last day. And these places, they shine upon the people of the heaven, like the way star shines upon the dwellers of the earth. So we are in the best location, the best place that Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala has created, and that is his house. Of course, when you are in the best of location, you have to act the best way possible. We have to have the respect of the house of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. We provide the best etiquette. We give the best akhlaq to the house of Allah and the people who visit the house of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. All of us as believers, we are here for a very short period of time. Tilkumma tuqadhalat laha ma kassabat walakumma kaseptu. Allah says, "There is a nation who has passed." Hundred years ago from now, there were people that were here, and they're no longer here. Thirty years ago from now, there were people that were here, they're no longer here. And then similarly, fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty years from now, those who are here, Alainos, won't be here. But what carries on is the legacy that we leave behind, actions that we leave behind, reminders that we leave behind, things that we leave behind so that the Ummah is able to take benefit from. A'maal that we did, the reward of it will quote, Insha Allah, a very long way, as long as we are doing it for the sake of Allah, and Allah preserves it. Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala says that those people who do good action, we allow their actions to flourish. And those who follow them, in those actions, they continue to get reward. So Allah says, "Oh believers, fear Allah." And every person should think what he is sending for tomorrow. But what am I sending for tomorrow? What's gonna benefit me tomorrow? So with that, alhamdulillah, Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala has given us this big ni'amah. We ask Allah to give us the ability to appreciate it, give us the ability to love it, give us the ability to respect it, give us the ability to work in the benefit of it. And we ask Allah to guide us to the best path that Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala has made and give us the ability to make choices those are beneficial for us in this dunya and in the life of your after. Ameen ya robbil alameen. Jazakumullah khairin. Insha Allah, I will pass on to the next session that we have in this schedule. Jazakallah khair.
Fa'adubillahi minash shaytani rujim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. As salaatu was salaamualaikum ya rasulullah. Respected community members, assalamualaikum. May Allah's blessing be upon you and all of us. As you know, that we have, this presentation will be about an hour because the Maghreb and Asha time. So I'm not going to take too much time, but I'd like to give you at least two important upcoming events you should know about. The first one is that we're going to have a general body meeting, which is scheduled for August 27th, the last Sunday of August. And this is according to the constitution, you need to have that. So basically, just mark your calendar, 27th of August, we're going to have the general body meeting. And the second one is, again, according to the constitution, we're going to have our next election is coming in October, and we should be on the third Saturday, and that will be 21st of October. There will be actually fifteen members will be selected, ten will be according to constitution that our, every year we actually select ten Shura body member, and there are five backend position, so that will also be filled up during this time. So please mark your calendar because this is important. Your participation for all of these is important. So I think that that thing. The last one, but not the least, I'd like to give you some input about the ICI work project. Lot of people are asking me what's going on or something like that. So I'll give you a brief updates on the ICI work project. In the last meeting, last town hall meeting, we already mentioned about that. We have finished phase one and phase two. The phase one was the foundation, and the phase two was the parking, pile and parking, and as well as the utilities and all those things. And that cost about 2.2 million dollar, and that fund came from you. That community come up with all the funding. So as of today, we don't have anything. I mean, that, everything from that. The next of the project is the finish up, finish out the whole things. And that will cost about 10 point, let me see that exact number, 10.462 for the base bid, and there will be about 8 million, 0.8 million dollar for alternates and all those things. As also, you know that we talked about, a little bit about in the last meeting, that the Islamic Development Bank approved about 7 million dollars for that, rest of that. But the remaining of the money, we need to come up with. So I'm looking forward for all of you to donate, because this donation is a sadakazaria. So whatever you are putting there, it will be for the rest of your life and my life to go from there. So basically, I mean, that's it. And also, I mentioned about that, that that project will be actually done by Ever Construction. Ever Construction did the phase one and phase two. Phase three also, we have selected Ever Construction. So currently, they are working on the bonds. So we told them to, we have to come up the bond for the whole project, which is 10 points, 10.467 million dollars. So they are working on it, Insha Allah. And we are looking forward for, within a week, that they will come up with something. And once they, I mean, they have the bond, then we're going to sign the contract. So we are expecting to have that next week. Something is going to happen, once that thing done, we are going to go smoothly, Insha Allah. Also, just for your information on August 19, the Islamic Development Bank representative, they are visiting us. So they're going to look at exactly the project, what's going on. So they will be here two days. They're going to meet with the ICI work board members, main sponsor and stakeholder, the GC and the consultant from 20 and 21. So if you see them, please welcome them. So with this, I will give it to brother Numan. He's going to go take the next topics. Assalamualaikum.
Fa'adubillahi minash shaytani rujim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. My dear respected brothers, sisters, elders, and youngsters. Salaamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Alhamdulillah, robbil alameen. It's been about a few months since the new Shura Council has been working, mashallah, and working diligently on the operations and everything facility wise for the masjid. By title, I'm your vice president for the masjid, but I prefer the title of the Khadem, Insha Allah. So I'm here, if you see me around, if you want to come around and let me know whatever you need, and Insha Allah, I'll do my best to serve you, Insha Allah. I want to start by thanking the staff that we have in the office, Sister Fazia and Sister Alena, Brother Hanaf, Said Parcell, who's working directly under outreach, Brother Mamun, who's working with the security maintenance team, Brother Malik, and Mustafa Shakir, who's helping out as a lead with the financial aid department, and also our brother Mosen, which is working with IT department and media and audio and everything else. So really want to say my gratitude to all these brothers, and don't want to forget Sister Russia, Insha Allah. She's been helping out on the operation side, and very important to have her on board, and also the lead for the Sisters Committee, Insha Allah. So having said that, and last but not least, from our security, our VSOs. Very important, all the volunteer VSOs, volunteer security officers that we have, day in and day out, who are here to make sure that our muzallis are here safe and sound, and you go home safe and sound, Insha Allah. So whenever you see our security officers, paid or not paid, just say, jazakallah khair, you know? And that would be more than enough to appreciate them, what they're here doing for us, Insha Allah. Operations Committee, myself, I'm representing Shura Council and the sponsor from the Shura Council to lead Operations Committee. Then we have Brother Malik as the lead, Brother Anwar, who's our president, and also on the Operations Committee, Brother Abdul Kabir, Sister Russia, Brother Nizar, Dr. Saleem. And right now, we are, we have interviewed last week, three candidates that we narrowed down from seven that applied and for the office manager's position, Insha Allah. So within a week or so, Insha Allah, you will see a new face in Operations Manager title and in the front office, Insha Allah. So just the oversight, operations update. That's fine, Brother Knight, you can go next. Some IT projects that have been projected and completed, and also in coming days coming up, Insha Allah, from the operations perspective. ICI conference room is getting renovated, Imam's office got renovated. The Dawa office has been moved to the front main lobby office. So all of these good changes are coming, Insha Allah. Some of the other activities that you can see are listed here, Insha Allah. Many of the cameras that were down throughout the facility on ICI side and ISI side, alhamdulillah, robbil alameen. All of them are working as of I speak right now, but by the time I get back, something can go wrong, so Insha Allah. But alhamdulillah, we have eyes everywhere and everything has been recorded, Insha Allah. So jazakallah khair for your donations, Insha Allah, that is undergo all these projects. I'm just trying to go through these slides real quick for the sake of that, we want to give all of you here a chance and the maximum amount of time to ask any Shura Council members whatever questions you may have, Insha Allah, for tonight. Next one is the library that is right behind us, back here, has been renovated, Insha Allah, and much help from many volunteers that put in their time and efforts in arranging that facility. As the library, some of the sisters who are elders are also praying in that room. Their regular salas, Insha Allah. So we like to keep it nice and tidy and clean for the sisters to pray there. So anybody who's utilizing the library is requested, Insha Allah, to clean up after themselves and maintain, Insha Allah, the way it is. This is a slide that is basically about the security and the safety, the completed projects and everything. Access controls are coming in, cameras are already mentioned. We have access controls, and we are in the process of working that all the members of ICI, if you choose to, and if you want to, we would give you the access cards for the, for the main door that is in the front on the men's entrance. All you do is take your card, slide it, and you can come in within the hours of that your card is allotted to come in. During the days, of course, five times salah, the doors are already automatically open half an hour before till half an hour afterwards, especially during the school time, when the school is there. So that's the update on access control, and some places that it's not there, we are trying to put it in place, Insha Allah. Office management, as you can see, Sister Fazia is the lead right now in our ICI office. If you have any questions related to any office work or management wise, please reach out to her. Also, Brother Hussam, who is our treasurer, he leads on everything that is related to the CRM and Neon and everything which handles all your debit cards and credit cards and donations that come in on weekly basis and monthly basis, Insha Allah. So if you have any questions related to that, please reach out to Brother Hussam or Sister Alena, who works directly under him, and they will be able to help you with any issues if you may have. Also, from the front office, the weekly newsletters are published. If you are not signed up for that, I would strongly recommend you do that. And that's one way of knowing what the community is doing or in the upcoming week or days, Insha Allah. The WOW series have been implemented by Imam Qashiev. Notary services are available at the front office, Insha Allah. And all these other medias that are listed from Facebook, Instagram, WhatsApp are available out there as far as the social medias are concerned. So as far as Shura meetings are scheduled, this is the going forward schedule for Shura council meetings and Shura body meetings. The Shura council meetings will be on the first and the third Friday of each month, and from 6:30 to 8:15. When the time changes, of course, these times will change again. And the Shura body meetings are open to the community members, Insha Allah, all the time. Shura council meetings are open for any members of ICI all the time, except if it's, if there's an issue or a subject about HR related, then that will be closed doors. So, and Shura body meetings will be on the second and the fourth Sunday of each month, Insha Allah. So these are the updates that I have from the operations perspective. Next, I would like to invite Brother Hussam, who will take you to the journey of finances. Jazakallah khair, wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Bismillah walhamdulillah was salaam was salaam ala rasulillah wa ala alihi washohbihi wa wala. Salaamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Quick update on finance. This is the update for the second quarter from April until end of June. As far as the donation, as you can see, we had some donations, and most of these were from fundraisings during the month of Ramadan. So we had donations for the ICI expansion. Membership income, membership income is a significant contribution to the overall expenses. So whenever you pay for your membership, it's directly contributing to projects within ICI. Overall, we expect about 50,000 based on the number of members that we have. So it's a great contribution. Your fees are going in to help them center, Insha Allah, expand. Operation donations in the second quarter, we have about 280,000 sisters donations. We have a separate bucket for the sisters, so we can track programs related to the sisters. We track income and expenses for the sisters separately. Outreach, about 50K sadqah donation, mashallah. We have a very generous community, a lot of donations for sadqah. And most of these, as you will see in the next slide, that they go to our local community. Youth donations, we also have a dedicated account for tracking donations for the youth. And these are specifically for programs for the youth. Speakers and special programs for the youth. Insha Allah, we are, as you might have seen in the weekly newsletter, we are hiring two youth coordinators, Insha Allah ta'ala. And we are planning to attract the expenses for them from a different bucket so that we can, Insha Allah, make that investment. Zakah in Ramadan, 75,000, and Fitra donation, about 47,000. Next slide, please. Overall expenses, I listed only the ones greater than 5,000, just so it's easier to track. Iftar obviously is the highest expense, 115. That exceeded what we collected, we compensated for that from operation. Payroll, this is how much we pay in salaries in quarter two for ICI employees, including the Dawa department. Sadqah distribution, this is how much sadqah we donated on your behalf. You gave us the sadqah money, and we donated to the local needies on your behalf. Security, I have a breakdown on security, so you have a better understanding of what that figure, 37,000. Monthly assistance, this is for the local needies who need continuous support. After they go a rigorous process to determine their eligibility, they put them on a monthly schedule. So every, for those three months, we paid, it's about 10,000, a little bit more than 10,000, as you can see that number there. Repairs, I have a breakdown on the number of repairs, 34,000. Utilities, I also have a breakdown, so you understand where the money is going, about 10K per month. Going down the list, just appreciations for employees and honorariums for guest speakers that come in, our insurance, meals and entertainment that we do for the community, especially in the month of Ramadan, programs and events that we do for the community, and external zakah organizations that come in, and we'd help them out with some of the sadqah or zakah donations, Ramadan programs, zakah distributions, et cetera, et cetera. So next slide, please. So this is a breakdown. The first one is the maintenance for the second quarter. You can see here that we have labor, we have landscaping, and we have HVAC. We continuously look for any issues related to our AC units. This is a big investment, we have 40 units. We need to make sure that we maintain them very well, so that they can last longer, Insha Allah. For the security, most of, 60% of the budget is spent on the security personnel. And also, we have the outside police security on Fridays, and that's about 20%, one-fifth of the budget. And we also continuing to spend and invest in our infrastructure, whether it's access card, whether it's cameras, to make sure that our security team is fully equipped. From time to time, we also buy equipment for our security personnel. As far as utilities, you know, half of our budget is for electrical. Because of now the hot months, we spend a lot on the AC. We've upgraded the ACs, we repaired a lot of the ACs. We try to use them, set them to a comfortable temperature, whether it's at ICI or whether here in the main muzalla. So that is our, you know, half of our budget, basically. And the rest is for the remaining utilities, 20. Water is about one-fifth waste and gas. Alright, so that's it. And I think at this point, I'd like to turn it, Brother Nahid, or you're gonna take the, facilitate the question? Who's gonna facilitate the questions? Okay, Insha Allah, so I'll turn it over to Brother Nahid to facilitate the next open question and answer, Insha Allah ta'ala. Jazakumullah khair.
Jazakallah khair. Salaamualaikum. So we welcome the questions, and this is going to be, like, if we can't answer any of the questions, we'll get back to you. We can send the email to secretary@ervingmasjid.com as well. We'll try to answer as much as possible, whatever the information we have. So, salaamualaikum.
Salaamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Jazakumullah khair. Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala huwufu.
Bismillah.
I think the, my question, and I think I went with two-two issue. The image of the masjid, especially the landscaping and the ester stroke, the, all the trees are dying. And I think I spoke with Malik, and I think we have a beautiful masjid. We have a beautiful place, alhamdulillah. But when you run, when you go through Esther and come across the masjid area, it's really bad shape. And we spent a lot of money, when we first started this masjid, we spent almost 40,000 dollars, and that's almost 200,000 today's worth. And all the trees are dying. And I also found out that even the city gave you a ticket because of the issue. So that's one issue that I am really concerned. The other issue is the, the way you made elaborate now was designed to be a sisterist muzalla, and that's what we collect money. So that's on your neck, especially on this Shura, that we have to be very careful. If we establish a place for worship, you cannot change it and put it elaborate. So please think about those two issue. Jazakumullah khair.
Jazakallah khair. You want to respond?
Yeah, I think that... I understand the frustration of Brother Agal. I think that I remember that when I was in the Shura Council, when you finished this multipurpose hall and the school, we thought that, that sisters room, I mean, that those who are, cannot go upstairs or something like that, will be there. But again, we are in the ISI need space, we are losing space or something like that. I think that you are working on it, you can talk about that issue, about the space issues. But we'd like to see that, I mean, that, that need to be, we need to do something. We're going to, yeah, I'm working on it, like, coming up with a committee, which will be facility, facility committee, look at those issues, the space issues, space utilization issues. Brother Hussam might talk about this.
Jazakallah khair, Brother Agal. So I do appreciate the comment. So about using for the library, it is still being used by the elderly, especially the elderly and the sisters when they're not able to go upstairs to their muzalla. So Insha Allah, that will continue to take place. So it is, it will still be used as a prayer. But when, when there is no prayer in session, we are using it, Insha Allah, for education and for the library. Regarding the landscaping, I do agree with you. Last year, we did major investments in fixing a lot of the irrigation systems, and we planted about 50 trees, alhamdulillah. If you look along Saqib Haq, a lot of the trees here, we were dying and, you know, kind of like aging, so we replaced a lot of the trees. So Insha Allah, point well taken. We'll look at the Esters and reexamine the sprinkler system, Insha Allah, and make sure that it's in working condition. Jazakallah khair. Jazakumullah Khair. I mean, some of the, because of the construction, we had to kind of like work around it. Some of the heads were not working, but we fixed a lot of them, but we'll, point well taken, Insha Allah, we'll take it to the maintenance committee, Insha Allah.
But going back to his comment, like, that place, I mean, it should not be the lighting. That was mainly for the sisters.
We collect money for...
Yes, yeah, so we need to maybe figure out something. You might, you talk about the other areas, to that library or something, keep it there for the sisters. Because that was the vision for this brother to come.
This library, the new library that we're talking about, yeah.
Sisters.
This should not be like.
I agree with sisters who cannot go upstairs, or all the sisters.
Yes, I mean, that continues to be the case, Insha Allah.
And we spend money to even, the funds are distributed, so the money is given to the... So, I mean, if we, if we don't, this is from the Shariah and also from the IRS. If we collect money for...
If we collect money per both Shariah in our Islamic law and also from IRS, if I collect money to do something, we have to do that. Otherwise, we are, we are not following the charter of both the IRS and also our Islamic tradition. If we collect money for Musallah, that has to be Musallah. The library was supposed to be upstairs and the school took and made classes. So that's a different issue. The library is on second floor and it used to be very big, but they keep cutting it. We understand the school is also part of the masjid. But the issue of the Musaleen has to also be addressed and also respected on that, Insha Allah, especially our sisters.
Jazakumullah Khair.
Salaam alaikum. Jazakumullah Khair for the presentation. I had a couple of questions. My first question is in regards to the walk development currently in progress. Are there any plans to allocate a portion of the living space to affordable housing? And my second question is, we have many donations for sadqah, but is it possible that we can build more on it? We have many sisters, other people in need who are getting help, but what we're doing is not fulfilling all of the need. And I believe in one of the Telegram groups, there's an effort to start, Something for Widows. Those are my two questions. And I actually just thought, I wanted to have one, give one comment in regards to programs. I didn't see an update about programs. Do you have any plans to do more programs in the community for brothers and sisters? Thank you.
Salaam alaikum. I'm just answering the walk project updates. I just gave an update. We have a walk board. So I mean that they're going to do their own town hall meeting and that question should be answered there. As you know, that this, the money we are getting from Islamic Development Bank, that need to be, I mean, that payback, okay? So we have to pay back within 15 years with their profit and all those things like that. So I don't see, I mean, I'm not going to respond that thing because it should be done by the walk board. I just gave you a presentation about where we stand about the construction. So Insha Allah, there'll be a town hall meeting specifically for walk board and you can ask that question to them and they will answer, Insha Allah. Sorry, I cannot answer that directly, but they will be able to answer those question.
So the second part of the question is sadqah. So you want to answer?
So as far as the sadqah program, we have a sadqah team. Whenever there is a, somebody in need, they come in, but they have certain guidelines that they go by. If there is an urgent need and the need exceeds what the committee is allowed to pay for the need, then it goes to the shura council and then a presentation would be made. And then a case-by-case basis, then the money would be allocated. And we had, we had a lot of situations like this where people would come in and ask for, you know, they have like a big need and they need assistance. So that has happened before, but there's a process for doing that.
Just to add on that one, we are also distributing sadqah through the other institutions like, which is coming to us. So, but we are working on creating a comprehensive policy because we want to ensure that we are balancing it out and standardizing like and preaching to everyone, so that there is no questions about that one. Insha Allah.
Is there any plan, Salaam alaikum, by the way. Is there any plan for a crosswalk for Rochelle? Because I'm seeing little kids trying to go to ISI, even families want to go for Tarawi and it's not safe right now. And I believe there was some talk with city council. Any update?
Very good question. I think, this is Esther's Road, Sister Yarzai. The Rochelle, yeah, Esther's Road, yeah. Yeah, I think we definitely need to try that one. That is a very important point you're making it because we can see people walking, yeah, we will definitely. I think that's what Esther is talking about, Rochelle intersection, yeah.
There's a plan by the city.
She means Rochelle Al Hamra, between Masjid and Al Hamra.
Okay, okay. I think, yeah, we can definitely take that one and work on that one, but I don't know, we need to reach out to city and we need to try it out, definitely, Insha Allah.
We can utilize our city council, Insha Allah.
Salaam alaikum. Jazakumullah Khair for posting the information about the timings of the meetings of the shura council and the shura body. This is the first time, honestly, I see this. It would be great if you would post this piece of information on the website. But more importantly, how would I know about what would the agenda of the upcoming meeting be? Because honestly, I have been noticing, and many others, that it's just a select group of the community are being made aware of an upcoming meeting and its agenda, even more than that, honestly. And we really need a mechanism to know where would the agenda of the upcoming meeting be posted? That's one question. And then I have another question. My question is related to us as an Islamic center. Where does the Islamic authority lie in the decision-making group of leaders? I do not see the Imam as part of the shura body or the shura council. So where is the religious authority and reference being referred to in our decision-making to make sure that we are protecting Zulm and we are not being detrimental in the decisions that might affect people's lives and Muslims' futures? Jazakumullah Khair.
Jazakumullah Khair. The first part of the question is about the meeting timing and agenda. We have been trying to keep all the meetings open based on the best practice recommendation provided. It's not intended to be closed, but when we started the shura last quarter itself, we wanted to keep it open and it was open. But one misstep or missed part is like it's not communicated. That's, I take the blame for that one. But we are communicating that one now and it is intended to be open. We don't want to close the meeting at all, except the closed-door agenda. About publishing agenda, we are like working through and getting the stability to the complex thing. So agenda is getting formed sometimes at the last minute. So that's a problem to publish it upfront into the website. Right now, what we are doing is like for shura, all shura council meetings, we are publishing the agenda to shura body just before the meeting or one day before the meeting as, like, as soon as possible. And shura body meeting, we are trying to get all the agenda fulfilled 72 hours before the meeting, but it was, it was, it has been difficult to get to that one because always agenda keep changing it. But I take the feedback and we will come up with somehow to publish that one to the public, Insha Allah. I forgot the second part of the question. Remember? Yeah, the second part of the question is like including the Imam in the decision-making. The entire process of shura body and shura council is as per the constitution. And wherever the constitution requires the religious leader or Imam presence needed, we are bringing Imam in. If we wanted to, like, include Imam in all the processes, like, I think we have, we are going to do a overhaul of the constitution, your feedback will be welcome over there to discuss and implement that one. You want to add anything on that one? Jazakumullah Khair, sister.
Salaam alaikum. My question is to Trezor. Masha Allah, good information in the presentations. I can see incomes, I can see expenses, especially in Ramadan. I can see iftar expenses, I can see Ramadan events, total around 121K. But I want to know how much income we got from Ramadan slots. I don't see that income.
Jazakumullah Khair for the question. So the iftar income was about 85,000 and it was sort of like in the operation budget. And, you know, that's a good feedback to kind of like break it down so you can see the difference between the two. That's something that we can take a note of it. But the income, as I said during the presentation, whatever we collected from the slots did not equal how much we spent. Part of that is because some people did not pay for their slot. Sometimes people put the donation in the operation cash bucket and they don't tell us. So in cases like this, it would become very difficult for us to account for it. Correct, correct. And we're going to, we need to take this into consideration for the next Ramadan. We need to allocate more because the cost went up and the number of food items that we ordered was more than what we expected before. Because of the food, because of the dynamics of the community, Masha Allah, the community is growing. And what we found is that we need to increase, based on the initial, you know, few iftars, we decided that we need to increase the amount so that we can make sure that the, you know, the people who are fasting to have adequate food. So we had to kind of like make adjustments, not worrying too much about how many slots and all that. We need to make sure that whoever is fasting, they can find a meal when they come into the masjid. That was kind of like the target and we figured that the financing, we can figure it out later. But we did learn lessons that we need to increase the number of slots for the following Ramadan, Insha Allah. Hope that answered the question.
Salaam alaikum and Jazakallah for being so transparent. Really appreciate what the council is doing. I have three questions. The first one, you said the community is increasing. Yes, indeed. And also the number of Muslims are increasing, people taking Shahada are increasing. So from the perspective of Shahada, I found that the whole ceremony of Shahada is very quick. It seems like we want to rush that ceremony. So my, I'm requesting that when somebody is coming for Shahada, we actually let this person know the importance of coming into the fold of Islam. And it also adds as a reminder for the other community members who are around. So instead of just doing the Shahada and saying salams and just heading out, it's better to explain what it means to be a Muslim, what it involves, what it entails, and then is this person ready to accept Islam. So what it does, it also helps all the community understand. In addition to that, it would be great if we can have a male and female gift bag available in the office, sitting right there, packed with Arabic Quran, with a translation, with a prayer mat, and some stories of the Sahaba, right? So if we have that package available, packed, ready, then all we have to do is when somebody is taking Shahada, explain the process, explain what this person is getting into, and then hand over this so that this person feels and has something to take back home, right? So that was my first request from a Shahada perspective. The second question I had was, how long do I wait to get a response back when I send an email to requesting something to the concerns committee? So one experience that I recently had was it took me six weeks for someone to call me back and take action, right? So all I want is at least a confirmation email saying that, hey, we have received your concern. We'll get back to you in due course, maybe in two weeks, three weeks, or even three months. But at least I know that somebody has looked at this concern or an email. The third, but not the least with regards to the trees that we are planting around. I was in Houston last weekend and visited Masjid Maryam. And I saw, you know, it's so beautiful, like, you know, the whole environment is beautiful and it becomes beautiful because of some water fountains. So I don't know if it is feasible, but I think that will add to our masjid, the beauty to our masjid. Jazakumullah Khair.
Jazakallah for the question. I think for the Da'wa, I would remind everyone that the Imam, Imam Kashif, made an announcement that if somebody is bringing a guest, you know, to take Shahada, not just to bring him forward, you know, to the podium, to your point, I mean, it's an excellent point, they need to check in with the office so to make sure that they have the proper conversation prior to taking the Shahada. And part of it maybe would be to give him that, like a goodie bag or information. Normally, when they properly introduce to Brother Saeed, who's the Imam of Da'wa, he sits with them and do interview and talk to them and, you know, walk them through the process. But it's a point well taken. As far as the, you know, sending an email, you should get a response. Usually if you're, if you're sending an email to like a paid employee, usually they reply within a day. For us, shura council or shura body, sometimes we are busy because we are also volunteers. Sometimes we travel, sometimes we have work and family concerns. So we apologize, it's shortcoming from us if we didn't reply to you. And so we apologize, but please, a lot of us are here, Masha Allah, Brother Anwar is here. You know, some of us, you know, try to attend all the prayers. If we don't reply by email, catch us and, you know, make us serve you, you know, Insha Allah, Ta'ala. So the last one, as far as the landscaping, so it was all done by volunteers. Most of the landscaping, as far as like planting and, you know, even fixing the sprinkler system, Allah reward all the volunteers who worked on this. The only thing that's paid is just the ongoing maintenance. So your point is well valid. We have talked about doing some improvement, major improvement for landscaping. We're just waiting for generous people like you all to help us and donate for that cause, Insha Allah. If we can get a budget for that, maybe we will discuss it with the community to kind of like overhaul the landscaping, Insha Allah. Water fountain is a nice feature, also needs a lot of maintenance too. So Jazakallah Khair for the feedback.
Add on that one. We are like making sure, like, we are, organization is committee-driven. So we are taking committee from outside, from shura body also. So definitely, I mean, if anyone is interested to form a committee for the Shahada part, like to take care of new Muslims and all those things, that's another way of like contributing. Definitely that's welcome. And the second part of the email you said, I think you mentioned specifically concern, isn't it? Concern email? Is that, yeah. The concern email is getting monitored by a part-time person, but I think maybe it is a misstep because like assumed like someone else is taking care. But please include like shura council and secretary so that we will try to address you as timely as possible with that, Insha Allah.
Concerns could be, the concerns could be something that can lead to an accident or in our premises. And if diverse kind of concerns are handled by part-time people, then where do I send the email if something needs immediate attention?
So shura council and secretary?
Shura council at ICI.
Yeah, so all the email you can use, don't worry about it, like who is getting...
What is the email ID? Shura? Oh, ICI, Ipan SC, okay.
Salaam alaikum.
Salaam.
My question is about the school. I live in Valley Ranch and I have two kids in ISI, in ISI. So with the school opening in few days, I'm really not, I'm concerned about the stability of the school at this point in time. I'm not able to find satisfactory answers with the board because whenever I ask the board, they're saying too many decisions are with the shura council. I'd like to know from you, what is your thoughts on it? What is the plan to stabilize the decisions about the school and the organizations as it's going to open in few days?
Jazakallah Khair. Unfortunately, we don't have ISI president, he's traveling. And I may not be able to give the correct answers to you, I need to consult with him. One thing, I don't know, understand the stability problem, like, maybe, again, I need ISI president to know what is the stability problem. The decision, shura council and shura body always take the decision, best interest of our ICI and community, and that is a trust given to us, like to the shura. And that is a trust given to us, like to the Shura. And we will be, Insha Allah, we'll be following according to our constitution and to the right path, Insha Allah. Yeah, I cannot answer the question, I need to consult with ISI president.
Salaam alaikum, bismillah rahim rahim. Alhamdulillah, rabbil alamin, wa salaatu wa salaam ala sayyil al-mursalin. This is ICI town hall meeting, ask the Shura, I only see the Shura Council, I don't see the Shura Body. Even though in the latest constitution amendments, it says that they are the highest authority. I feel like they are enjoying the authority but not the accountability. So I would really love to see their faces sitting here in front of us, Insha Allah. My question is, how are you going to bridge that gap in front of the government? Shura Council is the accountable party. But right now, based on the new constitution amendment, the authority is with the Shura Body. I feel that there is a big gap there that need to be bridged. Especially when these amendments happen, there was a meeting to really meet with those who actually recommended the changes. And guess what? Not a single one actually showed up. So no Shura Body members who actually signed on these new amendments showed up to explain to us what is the rationale behind those Shura, behind these constitution amendments. So I really wish to see the rest of the Shura Body, Insha Allah, next meeting.
Good point, thank you.
Jazakallah Khair, brother late, it is an excellent point. Definitely we'll take the feedback and we will work on that one. I mean, we have some representation over here, but I agree with you like, no, the majority is not here.
Salaam alaikum, rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Another question regarding the school also, and if you don't mind me, three questions please. The first one, there is a petition was sent and signed to send to the Shura Council and Shura Body. That was signed by almost 155 parents and ISI, like and ICI members, most of them. My question, I, so far we didn't, this is from June 24th. We didn't hear anything back at all as a members. And I think that that was overlooked and we didn't hear anything. So please, if you can, explain to us why nothing was sent back to the parents. The second question is, we, this is related to ICI in general, not just the school. I think everybody is noticing that there's kind of talk about racism and dividing in the community. For me, as a member who came all the way to this area specifically to be in a good Muslim community, this is a big concern. And unfortunately, I didn't see any comment or any email or any action from ICI in general, from Shura Council or Shura Body to address this matter. Allahumma accept one khutbah from Sheikh Kashif, but I think that came from him, not as a, as a ICI. So please, if you can explain to us, did you guys feel that there is a problem? And if yes, why it was not addressed at all by any email or on social media or anything to reunion the community and prevent them? Number three, there is always, I mean, as a members and as a parents in ISI, there is a survey usually done. I would suggest if we can do that also for ICI, like a survey to see like the ICI members about what's happening in the, in the masjid and any concern if you don't mind, if that's possible to happen. Jazakallah Khair.
Jazakallah Khair. Your second part of the question of the survey, like we are working on that one, survey will be released. The first part, like we have been receiving the emails from different, different things. And Shura Body is working on it and Shura Body is working according to the constitution. And we will follow in the constitution procedures on that one. Brother Anwar, you want to add anything?
As the brother said, I would really appreciate at least an email like that. Can we receive, this is, we're talking about 155 minutes. So receiving an email saying, okay, we...
Receiving an email saying that, okay, we received your petition. We're, I mean, we're going to consider discussing, as you said, and later we're going to get back to you. So at least something to tell us that, okay, you received it and you will address it.
Yeah, so anything coming to the secretary email, as ICA secretary, I tend to reply and or acknowledge at minimum. If I missed that one, definitely apology for that one, I will do that one. As I mentioned, yeah, as I mentioned, like there were a series of emails due to some issues coming. And we were working very hard to sort out all the things. Understand, what I'm saying that one. I mean, again, I have been getting lots of email to secretary email box and I've been replying it as much as possible. What is that? As soon as my backlog, I am getting clearing that one, I will be replying that one. But if you're saying that you send an email, 150 signature and expecting a reply, I will reply that one as soon as possible, Insha Allah. Unfortunately, I cannot talk anything about school, ISI president is not available here, so I need ISI president.
Brother Nahid, he's requesting on the second part of the question about discrimination and...
As I said, there's a lot of incident talking about racism in the community. We can feel, I mean, I think everybody feel that unfortunately, there's kind of starting of dividing the community, which is a huge problem. We all brothers, we all, doesn't matter what's background. So my question was, we did not hear anything from ICI, Shura Council or Shura Body addressing this and encouraging people to stay brothers and sisters. Any comment on that?
Yeah, Shura Body is working on that one. We have like, we have process, we are going through the thing. And we have been receiving number of emails from all directions. And it is, it is not, it is not fair to be expected to respond everything and quickly do anything. We are trying our best and to make the community in the unity, that's where we are going. Brother Anwar, you want to add anything?
No, I think that as, as brother said, that the Shura Body is working on it.
Insha Allah, we'll get, we'll get answered on this.
Salaam alaikum. I think about seven days back, there was a message on the ICI website from the president about this concern, right? Unless until something comes directly to ICI, they cannot address what's going on in WhatsApp groups. So jazakallah khair on for that. And then on a positive note, from last meeting to this meeting, there was a concern that I had raised last time about the tires. So it looks beautiful, thank you so much, our kids feel safe. So really want to appreciate and thank the committee for that, thank you.
Salaam alaikum.
Waalaikum as salaam.
So I have also a question regarding the school with the recent issue we have with the school. As the brother said, it's just like a few, maybe a couple of weeks and the school is starting and I don't think the school is very stable.
How do, how do you say school is not very stable?
Let me, let me just ask the question. So my first question is regarding this investigation committee. Can you tell me more about the process of choosing the members of the investigation committee? How was the process of choosing the members? And was this process approved by the school board members? Or it was just like one side is from this, the school, like the masjid, Shura Board and Shura Council?
Okay, jazakallah khair. So I can, I can respond to that one from the ICA perspective and what ICA is following and ICA Shura is following. ICA Shura has received a complaint from an employee regarding raising some six concerns. And because of that one, that employee may get retaliation. So we looked at it and we found there is a substance in that one and we followed the policy. The policy says to have a investigation committee and independent that one. So we formed independent committee by through the Shura Council and Shura Body and hand over to them. Now, we don't want to interfere into that one. We don't want to interfere any, any party in that one. We want that committee to run by itself and provide the recommendation and we will follow through the recommendations, Insha Allah. So the committee, the committee was formed based on Shura Council and Shura Body input and voting system. Initially, the committee was three members committee. There was a feedback, it is not enough because if one person get influenced, it can be imbalanced. So recommendation to have the five members committee. And right now, the committee members are five committee members in that one.
Sorry for asking again. But when you choose the committee, if you don't mind me asking, was there any consideration for any human resources experience or any experience in education system in general when you choose this committee? Thank you.
Yeah, in general, there was like a Shura Body resolution, like it should be like, I don't exactly remember the words, but it was, yeah, it was considering all the skills and believe like the committee has the skills.
A quick question, before you hire the independent committee, why as a Shura Body not go first to the school board and, you know, ask these question and understand about the situation or the issue or what the background of their decision before you involve their party? This is, is this the way supposed to be first?
Yeah, so the whistleblower policy clearly articulates like we have to keep the confidentiality. And the, and the employee, the complainer requested the confidentiality. And, and it is like the incidents, like now the six incidents, by process and association to the, to the body, we thought like we should not talk to the body because it will be compromising the complainer. Because the reason the employee came to the Shura Council is because like she feels like she's not getting the things. She's not like, not able to get the justice or whatever things she was looking for. So that's why she came to the Shura Council. So we have to keep like that confidentiality.
Allah is akhiya for the answer. But for that employees has been on that school for the past three years or four years. It came this, you know, the concern now? That's why I don't understand why it's not hired the independent for that employees.
I am not in the position to answer that one, that is a committee will responding to that one, no? Because it's not my jurisdiction because I don't know about that one.
This is Muhammad Al-Bajat, actually I'm vice president of school board. Now, in retaliation things that you mentioned here, I'm in the school board and I can assure to you and everybody here, I came to know about the grievance of the school employee that who filed grievance to the Shura Council, literally last week. The first time I know about these grievances was last year, last week, literally. And saying retaliation things, none of the school board members were aware of this grievance except the president. And he never shared with us any information about this grievance until just last week. The second thing I would like to mention, we in ICI hit the records last year. We have a Shura, Shura Body election, we have a constitution amendment voting and we have a school board voting. However, it was under the jurisdiction of the school board to hire or not to hire a secondary principal or a part-time teacher. But when it come to incident like that, the Shura Council accepted the grievance without asking the employee if she discussed these issues with the school board. We as a school board always receive complaint from a teacher, a regular teacher, and we solve the issue with the teacher. When you talk about the secondary principal or a leadership person in the school saw an issue in the school a year ago or two years ago and kept quiet for the full year or two years without saying anything, to me, this is another reason not to renew that employee a contract. And the other thing, it's under the jurisdiction of school board to decide in this one. And I understand that Shura Body is the highest authority in the masjid, but there is something called jurisdiction, which means we have to respect what's fall under the school board jurisdiction and to take an action. Besides, the Shura Body or Shura Council could come to the school board, ask all the question they wanted before they did what they did of the escalation. And we almost what aside the constitution and we hire independent committee to look after seven elected members in the Shura Body, four from the parents and three from the Shura Body and one from the Shura Council.
Salaam alaikum.
Waalaikum as salaam wa tulah wa barakatuh. Let me answer that question, I think that is already 10 o'clock. We already formed a independent committee, okay, based on the process. So I think that we should, I'm, I'm not going to talk about this issue because they are the one going to go and look at the whole issues and they are, they will come up with the recommendation, okay? So the basically, I mean, that for us, I mean, that we don't even speak about that issue anymore from ourselves because we, we like to make sure that we don't interfere their process, okay? So, so basically, I mean, that this is now on their hand, there are five member of the, in the member in that committee. And there are five, I mean, there will be some issues, they might have to discuss each other, they might not agree each other, but they have to go through the democratic process and come up with their, their recommendation. So based on those issues, I think that if you want, ask us to, why you have not done that, why have not done that? Right now, this is, this is already gone to a committee, they are working on it and I think that we don't have any answer on those.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, please, hold on. Hold on, hold on. Brother Al-Bajat, you, you just said something like because of this reason you wanted to terminate her or something. Please don't say something like that, this is HR against policies because it is very sensitive matter. Please refrain saying something like that. We have told that one, the complaint came into ICI, we are following the whistleblower policy, we hand over to the investigation committee. Please don't talk details, please don't talk why, what is lacking, what is there, that is against HR policy.
Bismillah. Just want to remind everyone, we have 10 minutes, Insha Allah, 10 minutes.
I mean, the issue here is now, we are not talking about details here, there's so many information out there.
I don't want to talk any information out, whatever things you want to talk here, talk please.
Let me, let me, let me finish it, okay? So I, I, I saw your, the one email and you are talking about these issues. As a, as a ISI board, you cannot even participate anymore, okay? That will be regarded as that you are, you are biased. You should not be biased, let them do it because we already have a committee formed. Let them do it and then without doing it.
The whole, the whole issue is about the jurisdiction of the school board versus the committee. You have a school board or elected member and now you, and you have a constitution that yourself voted for and you're basically push for this new constitution. And now the committee become the reference of what we are doing here. What all what I'm saying here, you have a school board that has seven members or elected members. And as a Shura Council and Shura Body, no one came to the school board, even questioning a school board, why they did what they did.
Because that's not why they came to us, that's, that's, I cannot answer those. But when they came to ICI, Shura Council, Shura Council has to follow the process and we follow the process. The committee has been formed and we go from there.
One more question, please.
Salaam alaikum, I have a follow-up question, like it's not about investigation committee, that's going on right now. This is the question about process, right? First of all, you know, I sent several emails asking, can you show me the proof of whistleblower committee, whistleblower policy ever being approved? No one has ever answered, right? That should be the first question you as a Shura Council and Shura Body look at. Are you following a process which is approved, right? That's number one. Number two, we are violating school bylaws big time when you are talking about an employee who is not an head of school, that decision or that complaint being refused. We actually have a very well-defined grievance policy within the school, which has level, which goes all the way down from teachers to head of departments, to head of principal, to head of school, to the school board. This process or this precedent we are setting is violating all those policies. Now, any student, any teacher can bypass all the school board, all the processes, directly come to the Shura Body or Shura Council and create a havoc in the school. School has 85 staff, 850 student as of last year. We cannot create such precedent which can create such kind of breakdown of processes. Whistleblower policy, no one has showed me is approved. Constitution very clearly says, there is a school board... Constitution very clearly says, there is a school board which is the jurisdiction which, according to us, as brother Muhammad was saying, that actually is managing the school. Let the school, let the complaint come to the school board, let them do the investigation. And if you find any issues with the investigation, you can, it can still come up to the Shura body and then they look at it, if they are not satisfied, then do the process, right? The due processes are violated, we cannot create 85 staff every time come to the Shura body and then create this havoc in the school. School runs with so many different processes and this, this is, you know, this is really seen as, you know, kind of intervention in the school processes.
Okay, salaam alaikum. The first part of your question is like you requested the information, the proof of whistleblower policy approval. First of all, you should not have been asking that one because it is already approved status. You are questioning Shura council wisdom and Shura council on that part. Second of all, ISI president is, hear me out please, ISI president is one of the orders of that policy. So that is why I requested you, when you asked for the proof, please go, yeah. Yeah, so, so, so that's it, that's it, that's it. So if you are questioning about the authority of Shura council, whether the policy is there or not, that's a different question. Second question, the ISI, ICI secretary has requested to give two years of meeting minutes. We have not received so far. We cannot, we, we wanted to get to that meeting minutes to know. No, it's not, no, it's, it's, the ask was not as a parent, ask was ICI secretary. According to the Shura body, we want to review the meeting minutes, what was going on, all this happens. Now, third, third part of the question. I'm not diverting the question, I'm answering. I did answer, it is a, it is, it is an approved policy, I send you the document. Okay, I, I don't want you to prove that one, it is an approved document, period, period there, like no. The second part of the question is like you have a grievance, you, you have a grievance, grievance processes, the grievance processes employee needs to follow. Why the complainer did not follow that one, that is with the investigation committee to investigate on that one. The third, third part, I forgot the third part. Third part is, okay, 85 staff, they all will be doing this one. If they, if any of the staff or more of the staff is thinking to do this one, we have a problem to solve. We should not be, we should not be thinking, this is, we should not be thinking an injustice is happening and we should not address that one because other people may come and ask for it. No, that's not the way to do. We have to address the root cause of the issue, solve it, period. If we are, if we are repeatedly coming in, we need to solve that one.
Okay, brothers, brothers, we, we have sisters also, they have couple of questions. They've been waiting patiently and we only have three minutes left, three minutes.
Brother Norman, I think we said like the last question, but anyway, I'll take one more question.
Salaam alaikum. I hear here a lot of me waiting for a committee, me talking to a committee, me addressing my concern to a committee. First of all, I enjoined in three votings this year. One for Shura body, you know, members, then for constitutional changes. And then the third one came pretty sudden and quick and it was a board members selection. I went and I participated in the three. And I would like the Shura to honor my vote and the result of the voting. We voted for people to take charge of the school. The Shura did send their people to be part, just like the constitution said. I don't want, I don't accept anybody telling me it's in the hand of a committee that I didn't vote for. I did not vote for a committee with my all respect for the members of the committee, which I don't even know whom they are and whom their name is. I did not vote for them. I voted for those people. I would like you respectfully to go to the people that I voted for and talk to them about the issue. You have been voted for, you talk to them about the issues. I do not want results out of a committee that I did not vote for. Otherwise, what's the point of us voting? You know, this is just a cycle, brothers, it's just a cycle. We're gonna be here next year, other people being voted and we are disagreeing on something. And let's form tons of committees for people who have not been even voted for. I don't accept a committee that I did not vote for, that's my first ground. My second ground, brothers, I would like to know why did Sister Dua got fired from the board? And to start with, has she really been fired from the board? Has there been an official communication that she has been fired? The rumors is that she's been fired. I would like to know on what ground she was fired. And there's a lot of rumors about it's completely retaliatory and it's about racism. And I believe this decision was done by the Shura. I would like to know if she was really fired and why she was fired? What was the reason for her being fired? And my third question, excuse me for a second. We're saying here, come and ask the Shura. And we know this big topic that's hanging above our head, which is the situation and the whistleblowers and all of the issues. Yet, do I see the people, the Shura body people that are actually supposed to represent me here? I would like to have them stand if they're here. I just would like to know that I'm raising my concerns to people that actually respected the fact that they're telling me, ask the Shura, are they here? I would really appreciate if they stand up if they're here, the Shura body. I came here, I'm doing everything by the book, you asked me to go vote, I went to those dates. I have kids, I'm supposed to make them memorize Quran, I'm supposed to have them engage in Islamic manners. I'm supposed to do so many things. Yet, I'm asked to come and participate in these things and I'm coming and I'm showing up on the other side. Are you guys honoring my time, my vote? I'm not saying that if someone complained, we don't follow through. But why do I have to take a decision from a committee that I did not vote for? Jazakumullah Khair and excuse me for my tone, I'm as concerned as you, even if we might be on a different page. But right now, while we're waiting for a committee to take a decision, half of us being labeled, I don't want to say the, the word, because once we go there, we can't come back. We cannot come back. And our kids are sitting right now in front of us. But you all know what the word is, people are being labeled with it. I have three of, the two, the two borns, the two borns that I have been raised babysit by people of other ethnicities. Some of you played with my kids, played when they were babies, played with them, they went to your homes. And you come and you say, label us as such and such. The actions that the Shura took in this matter gave, I don't, I don't even know how to say it, gave almost a green light for people to come and say those people are such and such. Please, brothers, we are one community and your decisions are extremely important.
Jazakallah Khair for coming, it's time for Ajan. And we're going to have, the next town hall meeting will be in October, in October. Jazakallah Khair, salaam alaikum.